Our city manager's performance. On September 12th, 2016, the City Council held a closed meeting to evaluate the performance of Steve Sarvey, city manager. In accordance with the governing law, at this city council meeting, which is the next open city council meeting following the September 12th closed session, the city is required to summarize the conclusions of the evaluation of the performance of Mr. Sarvey reached by the city council at the September 12th closed meeting. Conclusions: Mr. Sarvey did not request that such a meeting be opened to the public. As a result, the evaluation of Mr. Sarvey's performance took place in a closed meeting as provided by the Minnesota Open Meeting Law and Minnesota Government Data Practices Act relating to personnel data. As mayor of the city of Winona, I will now provide a summary of the conclusions reached by the city council from the September 12th closed meeting regarding the performance evaluation of Steve Sarvey. Mr. Sarvey has met expectations as city manager. Mr. Sarvey is working hard to gain experience and knowledge of the community and city operations. Mr. Sarvey works well with other city employees, the public, and businesses, and the city council appreciates Mr. Sarvey's service to the city and his new position and looks forward to continuing its employment relationship with Mr. Sarvey for the betterment of the Winona community. And now, I'll ask Mr. Sarvey if he has anything for tonight.
Your honor, I'd like to introduce Malia and her action team. They're going to be going through a short presentation on a new initiative that the community is working on to help make Winona a dementia-friendly community.
Good evening, mayor and council. In dementia-friendly communities, I would like to introduce Maggie Majewski, Sugarloaf Senior Living Marketing, and Trish Akar, Winona State University Professor Assistant Psychology, Assistant Professor of Psychology, two of our action team members. And so, I'm going to go to the computer and drive, and I'm going to have Maggie start with what is a dementia-friendly community?
I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to say a few words tonight about an initiative that we've started about a dementia-friendly community. Working with the senior population, which is very large and growing in Winona, we are experiencing some roadblocks that people, you know, we know what to do with a lost child when we find a lost child, but what do you do when you find a lost adult? That's exhibiting confusion. They give you their address. It may be where they lived 50 years ago, because that's their reality. Dementia and Alzheimer's and other memory deficiencies don't just affect that individual, they affect their caregivers, their neighbors, the business owners, people in our community as a whole. This past Saturday, just to extrapolate on the numbers in this community, we held the WACTA and Alzheimer's down at the lake, and we had nearly 300 individuals come down to support the event, the mayor included. But to see these families rallying around their loved one who has this diagnosis is really heartwarming, but it's also really scary when you look at a community that has an aging population and the numbers are growing. So what is a dementia-friendly community? There are several pieces to this puzzle. The first is having health care that promotes early diagnosis of dementia and care and best practices. To have residential settings that offer memory loss service and supports. Having dementia-aware and responsive legal and financial planning. Welcome and supportive faith communities. Supportive options for independent living and meaningful community engagement. This one's really key, because when I show you the numbers later, you'll be shocked at how many people in this community are suffering from this. Dementia-aware local government services, planning, and emergency responses. We have a memory care area in our facility, but in assisted living itself, so many people are that borderline that they've just been diagnosed, so they don't need memory care per se, but they need those extra supports. We've had individuals call 911 because they feel their car's been stolen, but they don't have a car anymore, so how do the police respond to that? We've had individuals from the outside call 911 because they feel like we are locking people in our facility, but that's not what the case is at all. I mean, it's for their safety and the safety of others. Dementia-friendly public environments and accessible transportation. Many of you know, transportation for seniors has been a big thing in my world as far as making it accessible and affordable. Businesses with dementia-informed services and environments for customers and employee caregivers. Our small businesses in the community are great for working with our elderly population. I point out Midtown Foods, because Ernie's there and he's very helpful, but people, you know, what do you do, like I said, when you run into a lost child? Right away, you know what to do, but if someone's wandering in the grocery store, what do you do? So that's what we're here to provide, is to make Winona a dementia-friendly community.
As members of the community, it can be easy sometimes for us to spot someone in need, but when it comes to people with dementia, the signs are not always so obvious. Without the support of the community, families and individuals affected by dementia can often feel invisible, lost, and in some cases, endangered. Everyone has a role in creating a safe and supportive dementia-friendly community. Your community can take steps to become dementia-friendly by following a four-phase In action phase one, you'll bring people together from all areas of the community, from government to healthcare, local businesses, and faith groups. Everyone, from young to old, should be invited, especially people living with dementia and their family and friend here partners. In action phase two, your community will assess your current strengths and gaps when it comes to meeting the needs of people living with dementia. Then you'll share information with community members, so they understand and have resources for adopting practices and policies that will make it easier for people with dementia to carry out their everyday activities with banking and shopping. In action phase three, you'll prioritize what your community can do to become more dementia-friendly. Finally, in action phase four, your community will act together, taking steps to become dementia-friendly and improving the quality of life for everyone touched by the disease. Ideally, all areas of the community adopt dementia-friendly practices, and the entire community undertakes goals being chosen together. You can become part of a growing movement in creating dementia-friendly communities. By taking a small step together, we can make a real difference.
So, wanted to tell you that we are in phase two currently. We know that we have this issue within our community. We have come together, and in coming together and asking for an action team, we have 31 different agencies that have come together with us. It's a pretty impressive action team. These two ladies are part of it, and as you can see, we've got Global Home Health, the city of Winona, our fire department, clergy, police, the Advocate Friendship Center, Winona State, Alzheimer's Support Group, we have a law office, Catholic Charities, Elder Network, Sugarloaf Senior Living, family caregivers, persons with memory loss, the library, St. Mary's University, Winona County, Winona Health, memory care, hospice, volunteer services, Sauer Healthcare, Live Well Winona, and Minnesota Marine Art Museum. Pretty impressive from this community and very, very willing to be a part of the action team.
It's difficult to read this, so I just want to point out a couple important pieces on the statistics of folks that have Alzheimer or dementia diagnosis, specifically locally. But right now, approximately 91,000 Minnesotans over the age of 65 have this diagnosis. So that's a very large number that's continuing to grow. So basically, one in nine individuals over 65. This number is going to, it's going to triple by 2050. So that seems like a ways down the road, but it'll probably affect quite a few people in this room and their families. In Winona County alone, there's 876 people over the age of 65 with a dementia diagnosis, and 125 of those are living alone. In the city of Winona, 409 people over 65 have dementia, and about 58 and a half is the estimate of, well, 58, we can't only do a half, but 58 are living on their own. So that is a pretty scary number, because it is the safety factor. And again, it's not just the safety to themselves, but it's the safety of others in our community as a whole. One other thing I want to point out, that right now, the young onset of Alzheimer's occurring in people under 65 is growing. So this isn't just something that we're looking at, you know, grandma, or grandpa, or mom, or dad. I mean, it's affecting people as early as 50 years old, even in their 40s. So it's really important that we start addressing this, because, like I said, it's just going to continue to grow. Do you want to talk about the action phases? We are in phase two. It was really impressive to see the action team come together, very, very large group, and people that really feel that need and empowered and want to do something to help the individuals in our community. Right now, we're assessing the community's strengths and gaps, and then, in turn, we're going to see how we can, through that assessment, what the priorities for our community can be. Because those of us working in this, in the realm of Alzheimer's, I can give you the priorities, but that's not something that I see from the fire department or the police department, where they're running into this continual issue. And then, finally, we'll take a community action plan to become a dementia-friendly community. Be wonderful to have that on the Welcome to Winona sign.
So at this time, what we've done with phase two is reach out to students throughout Winona, and I have been in contact with a variety of students at Winona State, as well as some colleagues at St. Mary's University, to coordinate a variety of students. Currently, we have around 30 students committed to the project, but we're still seeking additional volunteers, because this is quite a large undertaking, something like 800 businesses with an effort to be inclusive, given that so many people are in the community, still living independently. And in order to gather more information with phase two, what we're doing is a variety of interviews to different types of groups throughout the community, and the students are making these connections through phone calls, but then also in-person interviews. And based on that information, we will get a variety of perspectives about people's knowledge about dementia at this time, as well as what resources are currently available. And with that information, we can assess the data to think about how we can improve. So what goals we might have throughout Winona, and what are the needs of the community. So from there, the action team can review this information to then move forward with those goals through phase three and four.
All you have to do is come to the kickoff event. Tuesday, October 18th, 3:30 until 5:30, we are having Joyce Samard, adjunct associate professor, professor, University Western Sydney. She's got a master's in social work from the University of Minnesota, and she's known worldwide for developing three programs for all stages of dementing disease. It is so awesome that we are going to have Joyce for our kickoff event. And then, after she presents, she will present probably around 3:30 until 4:30, and then after that, we're hoping that the community who is in attendance will also be telling us, you know, we want to be interviewed, we want to be a part of it. I need to let you know that since this has been put in the different media, I have had persons in the community, three that I can think of at the moment, that have called, "Who are caregivers?", and they are questioning all kinds of, "What are we going to do? What are we going to do? How can I help?". So putting them on the action team and telling them that we want them to come to the kickoff event, and that we're going to be gathering all of this information, and hopefully, things will become better for their loved ones, because that seemed to be the theme, is that they felt that their loved one was no longer there, and other people didn't understand. So I think it's a really wonderful initiative, and we wanted to present that to you and hope that you want us to become a dementia-friendly community. So thank you.
Would you repeat the date and timing?
It is Tuesday, October 18th, from 3:30 to 5:30.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Anything else to say, Mayor? Now we'll have Roll Call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlay.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
And under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the public hearing to consider resolution to levy assessments for unpaid charges. I would note that those persons who appeal this evening, any charges would be given through September 26th to pay the charges without the administrative fee. And Mary did distribute an updated assessment list that was, shows payments made through this morning?
It was on 3:30 today.
Okay. Well, I'll call the public hearing to order and ask if there's anybody here that wishes to speak. If there is, step to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
My mom is here, and she just went to the bathroom, and I don't know if she's supposed to speak now or not about a water bill.
That's later, I believe.
Louise Pronzinski.
1706 Monroe.
Yes.
That's later.
Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody here to speak to their unpaid charges? I'll ask one more time, anybody here wish to speak? Hearing none. Public hearing closed. Is there a motion?
I'd move to adopt the attached resolution to levy the special assessments.
Second. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Just a comment, Mayor and council members. I, you know, I think all of us who've been here for a while have looked at these lists over time, and at least in my case, I see familiar names every year. And not to single out any particular group of names, but a lot of them seem to be landlords for rental property. And I know we have a policy regarding non-payment of municipal bills for liquor licenses and things like that that are renewed on a yearly basis. And I know that the rental certifications are reviewed on every five-year basis, so perhaps staff might be interested in coming back with a policy that might do that same sort of review every five years as it reflects the rental property. I'm just throwing that out, and I know that we have a landlord here, so...
They do that for unpaid taxes and unpaid water bills.
They do.
When you're up for a certification, if you don't have it up to date, you can't renew.
Oh, okay.
So they do that already.
Okay.
I think probably offered two years ago when you brought it up. The first time, it was off of you, I'm pretty sure you brought it up.
Probably did. Thank you. Well, then, forget those original comments.
Early dementia.
Okay. I don't agree with what he said, Mr. Thurlay.
I said, "Early dementia".
He's too with it.
Any other questions or comments, George?
Yeah, just for the public's knowledge out there, we have $159,922 of water bills that are unpaid, and that will be assessed, so...
Anything else? I think we're ready to vote, unless Mary had something?
Mayor and council, I'll just say that the amount this year is less, it's about 8% less than the amount last year at this time, so it's still a high number, but it is less.
Okay. Michelle?
Is it possible that if any of these people come in by the 26th, that won't be assessed? Or is it still assessed? I mean, they'll have the 15% fee, but it would stop that process from...
The assessment happens later in October.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Item 2.2 is the public hearing on the 2015 SCDP East End Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program.
Lucy, did you want to speak?
Thank you, mayor, and members of council. This is a public hearing that's required by our funders during the implementation of a grant. So this is the East End Revitalization Program, and I'm going to pass around two things. One of the largest components of the grant, or I guess, is rental rehabilitation. These are pictures of Morningside Terrace. And that has been renamed to Bluffview Estates, and part of the Small Cities Funds were used in this project. Our $150,000 loan leveraged $6 million in acquisition and rehabilitation. And they're actually having a ribbon cutting, and we'll get a notice out to the city council about that. It's on October 11th at 4 o'clock. The second piece of our grant is owner-occupied housing rehabilitation on the eastern edge of the city, and that program is going well. We have two completed and ten in some stage of either bidding or waiting for some of the state review processes. So the program's going really well, and this public hearing is required under deed, and that's the purpose for it this evening. I'll add that Nick Larson, our community development specialist, came into this grant in mid-cycle, and he's just doing a fantastic job, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anybody here that wishes to speak. Anybody here wish to speak to the East End Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program? It's your last chance. Anybody here wish to speak to the East End Neighborhood Rehab Program? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jerry and seconded by Pam. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Jerry.
Just want to compliment Lucy and her staff. These Small Cities Grants are not easy to get, there's a lot of competition throughout the state. So first off, to just get the money is difficult, and then to go through all of the different steps with the property owners, it's very complicated, and year after year after year, Lucy and her staff really set the bar. So they do an outstanding job.
George?
And I say, it was well advertised, and you had a couple of meetings down by the East End Rec Center, and it was very, very well attended, and unfortunately, everyone could not get something, so, but it's a good program.
We figured it was about time to put a few dollars into the East End. We know that there has been nothing going on down there.
Maybe something later might happen, so...
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Anything else? We'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is a reappointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Robert Hively Johnson.
So moved. Move to approve that appointment.
Or I'll second it, that's fine.
Thank you.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Item 3.2 is the banner request for the color dash. The banner would be over Mankato Avenue from October 3rd through the 10th.
I'd move to approve that request.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Item 3.3 is the water test results for lead and copper.
No actions required, but it certainly was good news, I think, from the Minnesota Department of Health regarding our lead and copper. We are in good shape.
Do you want to receive and file?
Sure.
A motion to receive?
Oh, a motion to receive and file, yes. Second. Motion by Jerry, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Item 3.4 is a request for utility fee reduction for 1706 Monroe Avenue, and the property owner is here if you have questions.
State your name and address, please.
Hello there, my name is Louise Pronzinski.
Can you move the microphone down a little bit, just so we can all hear you? There, that's better.
Hi, I'm Louise Pronzinski, and I live at 1706 Monroe Street. And I woke up one morning, and here's two gentlemen knocking. Wake up, Louise. And so I go to see what's happening, and they tell me I owe $700 and some dollars, and $744.10, where normally, my water bill is $47 or $57, and that's at the tops. I live alone, there's nobody else to be there to turn anything off or on, except me, and I only have one hose outside, so, and that wasn't dripping at all. And since they've been there, my grandson and my son have gone through the house and tried to check everything, needed any little tweaking, but what's making it up to $744? I don't think any of you needed that much money for a day.
So have you had a plumber out there to check out your toilet?
Well, my grandson was a plumber.
Oh, okay.
So...
All right.
And they've checked about everything that they had on the list.
George?
Did the city come and do any checking at all of... Keith, you can explain, I guess, how they do that.
Well, the city came in and said that they had gotten a red flag in the morning, and that was it.
Mayor and council, our staff does go in, and if the homeowner allows them to look around, they do look around. And I did get a report back from the staff that they believed it was a leaking toilet and an issue with the water softener. So those would be, have to be addressed by the property owner. That's not uncommon, to have a toilet leak along that line and have a bill built that size.
And they've been all checked and refurbished and what they needed? Please?
All right, well, are there other questions for her? I guess not. Thank you. Anybody wish to make a motion?
I always will make a motion to work out a payment plan with the homeowner with no interest or assessments attached to her, and that she has the length of time needed to pay off her bill, or just, that'd be my motion.
Second to the motion?
Sure. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'd like to offer an amendment to this bill. We, or at least, when we've come up with these issues in the past, we've dealt with the water usage portion of the bill, but we've also looked at a forgiveness in the sanitary sewer fee, since the water that was used was not something that required city treatment, other than passing through the treatment plant. So I would like to amend the motion to forgive $250 of the sewer portion of this particular bill for this payment period only.
I'll second that.
The motion is second for the amendment. Discussion on the amendment.
So we're talking about $250 here?
Yes.
I think, I see it's $294 for sanitary sewer.
Right. This is kind of a compromise. It's not exactly $294. I figure $250 would be acceptable.
Okay, I just wondered if you were aware of that.
I think a good faith effort on the city's part to share in this unfortunate incident.
Further discussion on the amendment? Ready to vote? We'll vote on the amendment to forgive $250 of the sanitary sewer portion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-2. Now, any discussion on the original motion?
I support the original motion as amended.
Oh, okay, as amended. Okay, so we voted on the whole thing, all right.
And I think the payment plan is...
Okay, motion passed 5-2 then. Confused.
But no, we did the amendment, now the main motion as amended is what we have...
Well, that's what I thought I was suggesting.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion on the main amendment, or the main motion?
So when Michelle, excuse me, so when Michelle first introduced... So what Michelle, excuse me, so what Michelle first introduced, that would pass along with the two hundred and fifty dollars?
Payment plan on the reduced amount.
Correct, correct.
No interest. Are we ready to vote on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. So you got two hundred and fifty dollars off your bill plus the no interest and the payment plan to Uh, the motion, what was passed was they reduced your bill by two hundred and fifty dollars from the sanitary sewer portion of it, and then you have, you can work out a plan with the finance department to pay the rest of it back with no interest over a period of time. Thank you.
And next is item three point five, a request to eliminate a handicap parking stall on East Howard Street at four fifty-nine East Howard.
I'd make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul, discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Under unfinished business, item four point one is to warrant the contract for the Knopf Valley Storm Sewer Replacement Project to TJ's Trucking and Excavating with a bid of fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. The engineer's estimate was eighty-two thousand, six eighty-nine fifty.
I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolution, awarding the contract.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry, discussion?
I have a question.
Pam?
Yes, I, there's quite a big difference between TJ's estimate and the other two, and indeed, the city engineer's estimate. What accounts for that thirty thou, about thirty thousand dollars difference?
Mayor and council, that is always a difficult question when you come up with what's the difference between one bid or the other one. They do different things in their numbers, and I guess what I have to look at is, are all three companies reputable, are their numbers realistic, and we're comfortable with this, it is a very good deal in the price they gave us compared to the other ones and compared to the estimate. I'm very comfortable with what they're doing for us.
Okay, so we're sure that they're going to do the right, do the right job?
I would say absolutely.
Do it well, okay, thank you.
It may also be that it's the end of the working season, they may have had time to squeeze another project, and the other two don't.
In reality, they're, you're right, they're doing work for us on the, the tank out at Cobblestone, and we've allowed some, some movement in that because it's not critical to have it online right away, and because of that, they're able to fit this in at the same time.
Al?
I assume the motion refers to the resolution that was handed out, that refers to the specifications of August twenty-fifth rather than September twelfth. And my only comment would be, you know, obviously, this particular infrastructure fail, you know, in that area is not, compared to the rest of the city, fairly, fairly new, and I guess, you know, once it's opened up, I'd be curious as to know why that particular pipe failed.
We, when it's opened up, we'll do more research on it, but there is a longstanding belief that some of the soils out in that area are hotter than other areas. You know, most of the community has the sand base
Right, this is clay soil out in that area, yeah.
It's clay, there might be some issues.
It's going to be a lot more movement.
We'll have to be careful with the bedding of the, of the pipe and all that.
Okay. Don't want it to happen again in another few years. Thank you.
Any other, are you, any other comments or questions? We'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Under new business, item five point one is an ordinance for the wireless facilities and city rights of way.
I'd make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul, this is something we had a pre-council meeting on and discussed at some length. Questions?
I don't have a question, I just want to say, Carlos, thank you for this detailed packet of information, and thank you for being on top of this. I think no one would have been happy seeing an eighty-foot pole go up in some random location in historic downtown or on the levee, so I'm really pleased to see this, and I think it's understandable, and it'll work well, I think the city will be able to work well with this, and they should be able to do what they need to do to get better coverage, so thank you for that.
Al?
And, were you?
Yes, I have a question, is what will be the, what will be the procedure for people to get permission to use existing poles? Is there an orderly procedure here?
Mayor and council, they would be subject to a pole attachment permit from the engineering department, and the process is already stipulated in chapter sixty-six of city code.
Okay, thank you.
And as follow-up with that, what fees are associated, associated with that?
We have the ability to charge a fee as appropriate for review of the application, that's right in the ordinance itself. If the pole is owned by the city of Winona, we could potentially work out an agreement to have some type of fees that would come to the city for use of city facilities within the city right away, so that option is available.
I'd, I'd like to have staff pursue that, you know, come back with some sort of a, you know, a process where we derive some income from the use of the right away.
Carlos, we should put something in the fee ordinance for a council.
Can you?
Thank you. George?
And Carlos, just for a refresher, how would this affect Valet View Towers?
This ordinance would not affect Valet View Towers.
Okay, could, you know, different providers add on to those towers?
Yes, they could.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point two is the Sobieski Park Pavilion Bid Authorization.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul, this is something we looked at in a pre-council discussion. Discussion? Questions? I guess not. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point three is the Union Pacific Railroad Agreement for Crossing at Levy Park.
I'd make a motion to authorize administration to execute the agreement, including the payment of twenty-six thousand to Union Pacific.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Discussion? Al?
More of a question, you know, we're talking about the twenty-six thousand dollars, is that a one-time fee, or is this a yearly fee, or?
It's a one-time fee, but Chad, do you want to
I'm just curious about, you know, doesn't really say in the documentation I looked at.
I mean, council, it is a one-time fee, it's what's defined as a railroad grants right, and so for, for and in consideration of this agreement, the city is responsible for paying twenty-six thousand dollars to perform and comply with the terms of this agreement, and the railroad hereby then grants to the city the right to construct, maintain, and repair the roadway over and across the area. We did ask the railroad questions about this fee, it's really tied to the access, and what they define as the, the right to put a crossing down on their property, or within the crossing area.
Almost feel more comfortable if the words in perpetuity were included, but, you know, again, we're at this stage, I'm not going to go there because it's been a long road to get here, so.
It's the railroad.
Yes, I know it's the railroad, thank you, Chris.
Well, I have to commend Chad and the staff here for
Yeah, I, I don't
Getting us to this point, it's, it's not been easy.
Right.
Pam?
Yes, I'm, I was really delighted to see this in my packet, thank you. I do have a question, though, you said, it says, construction would commence within twelve months, and so is there any, is there any mention of when it has to be finished?
Mayor and council, the agreement doesn't address a date to complete the project, but again, we, we must commence work within the twelve months after we sign the agreement, so twelve months close to today, in theory, I mean, we'll sign agreements as quickly as we can, and, but this agreement does not have a completion date tied to it. Again, the railroad, could that come with the agreement that's signed back from the railroad, it's possible, if that's the case, I'll certainly inform the council of that.
Oh, well, I would, I assume that since we are paying Union Pacific for the construction of the project, that they'd be in charge of when they started it within twelve months, and then when they finished it.
Correct, we do need to provide specifications and drawings for the crossing, and then have those approved by the railroad, and then they would start the actual construction of the crossing. I think that clause is in there so that the city doesn't, in a loose sense, lag behind in getting the plans and specs to U.P., so the process, so the project doesn't sit, is my assumption for that clause.
Right, so I would not like it to see it sit halfway done either, so I just wondered if there's a way that we could maybe alleviate future problems by suggesting something as part of that contract.
We certainly can, yep. But again, it's not within this agreement, I mean, we can certainly have a discussion with the railroad once the agreement is signed, and that, I think the time to do that would be during the review process for the plans and specs. I would imagine we're going to have another documents to sign if it's more of a contract to do the work, and certainly we can add those completion dates or suggest those completion dates in those documents.
Any other questions? We'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point four is a report on the assessment role for the 2016 sidewalk project, and the resolution would set the public hearing for Monday, October seventeenth.
I'd make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Monday, October seventeenth.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Al, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point five is a report on the assessment role for the 2016 Grand Street Reconstruction Project, and a resolution to set the hearing for October seventeenth. So moved.
Second.
I think a motion by Michelle, and seconded by Jerry, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point six is a resolution ordering assessment across for the 2016 miscellaneous utilities.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point seven is the report on the assessment role for the 2016 miscellaneous utilities, and to set the hearing for Monday, October seventeenth, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
And item seven point one is council concerns.
And we'll start at the far right with George.
Thank you. Steve, any update on any more conversations with the Mankato Avenue Crossing?
No.
Okay, but we're still pursuing that.
We are.
Okay. And also, on October first, no need to be alarmed, but you're going to see around seventy people in yellow t-shirts moving around the fourth ward, it's going to be Rosie's Roundabout, so no need to call the police, we'll all have bright yellow shirts on and just traveling around the East End, so.
What are you going to be doing?
Walking. Just, you know, conversation and
Okay, no different than normal, except this time you'll have matching shirt.
Everyone have a good week.
Is that it, George?
That's it, thank you.
Paul?
Pass.
Pam?
Pass.
Michelle?
I have two things. The first one, Monica, is to see if it's possible to get a map or some type of laminated bus route inside of the actual pavilion, because I don't have bus routes to hand out, and I'm asked that on a daily basis from people who are new to the community, asking which bus line they should catch, and I have to admit, I do not know. I, I can go online and look for them, but they want to take something with them, and I figured that might cut down on some of the paper production, and then it's right there for whoever needs it when they come to check in. I don't know if that's possible, but if we can look into it. And the second thing is, we are accepting adult applications for not the upcoming November trip to Misato, but the April trip of 2017. The students have all been selected, but we do need adult applicants. Hopefully, some from the community, staff, or parents will sign up. Applications are due by September twenty-sixth at six P.M., and you can bring them here or pick them up here, bring them to me, or get ahold of Joe Lepley, and we can get the application to you. We are looking for about ten responsible adults who would like to take twenty-six students to Japan. That's all I have.
Jerry?
One real quick one, the tourism paddle wheeler that's on Huff Street, that squeals so loud you can hear it from the highway with your windows closed when you're
Really?
Stopped. Oh, yeah. It's been a couple of weeks, I forgot to mention it to you.
He's a little grease.
I think it needs a lot of grease.
Al?
There's a joke there somewhere, but I'm not going to go there.
I know.
Okay. No, I was just going to say, in the light of what councilperson Alexander said, she and I and other members of the community served on a panel that interviewed some of the students who were applying to go to Japan for that trip, and I was very impressed, and all of them were wonderful. I mean, all of them deserved to go, unfortunately, it's a process where only certain ones can go, and those that perhaps didn't, they can apply again, and I hope they'll be successful the next time around, but it was a, was a very good process, very good, to see the students perform as well as they did. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could I just ask one thing? We don't have a fee for a burning permit, do we?
There
Yes.
There is, yes.
Oh, there is, does it have to be on the size of what we're going to be burning, or?
We just added that.
It's not backyard burning, it's real burning.
It's for brush, big brush pile.
Okay, that's added for next year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And under the consent business, there are three items, approval of the minutes from September sixth and twelfth, the final adoption of an ordinance to approve the proposed fee schedule for 2017, along with the attached summary ordinance for publication, and the third item is a claim against the city by Winona Health on behalf of Beverly Allen.
I've moved approval of the consent agenda, and the pronunciation of the last name is Allen.
Allen, okay.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second that.
We have a motion, and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.